Public comment.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this March 25th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and I ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council with me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you join the city council with me in a pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Barry Martin. Lieutenant, we're happy to have you with us tonight. Let me recognize our city manager for a weekly, a monthly update.
Thank you, Mayor. Several items tonight. First, just to, hopefully some of you were able to participate, but this past week, we, we had the Forsyth Creek Week. This, the Stormwater and Erosion Control Division worked on the, on that program through yesterday, March 24th. The week-long experience included creek cleanups, immersive creek crawls, hands-on rain barrel making, insightful demonstrations, and engaging experiences. Got a very much a lot of overwhelming positive response from the partners and the community, so that was a great way of helping clean up our community. So we thank everybody that participated in that. I just wanted to remind council again and the community that, that we are, are going to be hosting City Vision 2024, April 23rd to, third, on Tuesday, April 23rd to Thursday, April 25th at the Benton Convention Center. We were at a town and state dinner this past week where they said that this was going to be probably the largest event that they had had even pre or post pandemic. Over four, 500 municipal officials, I think, are already signed up, so they're encouraging everybody to make sure that they're signed up if they want to be at that event. And a couple of community events, the next step in the Forward 2045 Outreach Effort, as a part of that effort, the Planning and Development Services team is wrapping up the second round of public input meetings, and they have another one tomorrow, March 26th, at the Mini Lee Davis Harris Community Center at 2020 Northeast 14th Street. So we encourage anybody that's interested in that to please attend. The March meetings have specifically addressed land use policy recommendations, with questions centered around land use preferences, growth management areas, activity centers, and growth corridors. Our Human Relations DEI Department is producing the Twin City Trailblazers Award Program, which will honor nominated women of Winston-Salem who have been recognized as trailblazers in the community. This event is being held tomorrow, March 26th, at Salem Lake Marina Center at 1:30 PM. It's free and open to residents, but registration is required. In the, as a part of our update from our legislative program that we did, the federal government has recently approved $700,000 for expansion of the city's Behavioral Evaluation and Response Team, affectionately known as the Bear Team. The Bear Team was, began as a pilot program, program last year to offer an alternate response to nonviolent mental health domestic disputes and substance abuse calls made to law enforcement and first responders. Has been overwhelmingly successful diverting our public safety resources from having to go to, to these calls and producing a better outcome for these folks that are in some stage of mental health crisis. There was a press release that went out this week, and we just want to make sure everybody's clear. On two, Thursday, NASCAR announced that it had acquired Winston-Salem Speedway, Inc., the current promoter of the weekly racing series at Bowman Gray Stadium. This is, they acquired the, the company, not Bowman Gray Stadium. NASCAR will manage racing operations under a 30-year lease with the city of Winston-Salem through December 2050. So the shared, Bowman Gray is, will continue to be owned by the city. It's a shared facility, racing running typically from early March through August, and then Winston-Salem State University Rams running their football program during the fall. And that's how it has been and will continue to be under this arrangement. And then finally, there was a, we sent all the lists to you late, late last week on our efforts to move forward with the resurfacing contract, to get that done quickly this year. So I'm gonna call on Keith Huff from our Traffic Field Operations to give a quick briefing to council on this resurfacing contract.
Mr. Huff.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, excuse me, members of the city council. As you're aware, we are constantly on our resurfacing list. It's kind of like the Golden Gate Bridge. Once you stop it, you're already starting on the, on the redo. And no exception with the past year where we stopped Thanksgiving of last year with our resurfacing efforts, actually repaving the roads. But even before that, we started developing the list. And with that list, we passed that through several city departments, engineering, utilities, planning, development services, to make sure we didn't have any conflicts or, or utility issues that would end up cutting or disrupting our roads after they'd been resurfaced. So we have gone through that effort coordinating with all those city departments to develop a list where we believe it's not conflicted, meaning you get a road and then two months later it's cut by a project or something there of that sort. So that's what we've been working on as of late. The list that the manager sent out to you, we have field verified all of the streets, meaning that it meets the conditions, the block cracking, transverse cracking, utility cuts, that it meets our worstest first scenario. And the reason we had to take this hands-on approach this time is we use a pavement condition rating, or historically did, where we rate all 2,000, 1,250 centerline miles of roads and give it a rating, an individual rating. But due to staffing, resources, or lack thereof, we've not been able to keep up that list like we like to. So we have done the hands-on approach by field verifying the list that you had, the manager sent out, and are hoping to adopt a newer strategy, one that the similar, larger cities are doing, where they are contracting these efforts out to a service that rides the roads, that give a uniform product, and those communities that utilize that can strategize, get mobility issues as far as mobilization, optimizing those things to, to stretch their dollar. We have received some feedback and requests for proposals on that, hope to move forward with that. So the list that you have, this would theoretically go to construct our contract, notice to proceed July of this year, and that contract would carry through to basically June, July of next year, 2025. So just a quick update, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Huff? Oh, that's all right, Mr. McIntosh.
Not a question so much as a comment. I really look forward to this effort. You know, we gave staff the, the directive of improving our leaf program and asking council to sort of step back and get out of the way. I thought that was a major success. I think this will be the same kind of thing if we let the professionals get the job done. I just think we'll, we'll get more done, more roads that actually need to be done, done first. So I'm looking forward to this.
Mr. Mundy.
Thank you for the update. Question for you, the, the grading of all the different streets and roads. Is that for public consumption?
The, the list that we have now, or what we intend to have?
What you intend to have?
What we intend to have, Councilmember Mundy, is a, a year-by-year strategy of residential majors, collectors, that we can put out for budgeting purposes, that they could see where their, their street is rated in, in amongst their peers in the neighborhood, and it would yield a lot of transparency with what we have now. So we're very much looking forward.
And that will be something that lives on our website, most likely?
Could be housed in an interactive map where you can click on your very street and see where it's rated.
That would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Cipio.
Yes, this is a question. It's just a comment. The first five road, roads that are listed on the list are now in the northeast ward and not the east ward.
Councilmember Cipio, apologies for that. We have corrected that.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Huff? Oh, excuse me, Ms. Clark, and then Mr. Larson.
I have been critical of our road maintenance up till the meeting two weeks ago where I said, and it's true that every time we do a customer survey, roads are always number one and, and, but we seem to ignore that. I support your efforts, manager, to do something. I like the idea of fixing the worst roads first and on and on. And I do want everybody to know that the west ward has the fewest linear feet of roads. If I have same number of people, we have the fewest linear feet of roads. So when you allocate the money evenly between wards, I benefit the most on a per foot basis, because my denominator is the smallest. Having said that, I support your new efforts. Let the dollars fall where they should. Let's fix, fix the worst ones first and move on up. I also like the idea of, of using some type of uniform system for grading. The way it's being explained to me, Joe Smith may go out one month and rate roads, and Mary Sue goes out another month, and each one of them sees a little different. This way, it's all done uniformly. I like the, Mr. Mundy's suggestion, it'll be online so people will know where it is. And now I think it's up to the council to be sure that we allocate enough budget money so we can make a difference. But I look forward to seeing what happens here. Thank you.
Mr. Larson.
I'm not sure where this falls underneath this, this project, but can you elaborate on the Main Street Liberty Street conversion and whether that conversion is going to be a resurfacing as well?
It is going to be a resurfacing, but not as a part of our annual resurfacing list.
Separate bond.
It's a separate capital improvement project.
That key's exactly correct. Councilmember Larson will handle it the same way we did First and Second Street, two-way conversion.
Is that on schedule? Do we have a schedule for that?
It, it's basically, we're waiting on Duke to replace some of those mast arms right now. That's the work that's currently underway, and, and we can ask Jeff Hansler to get you an update on that one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Huff. All right, that concludes, Mr. Pat. Very good. We do have one honorary item tonight, and we're really pleased that the resolution is going to be read by Ms. Camille Poe and her students from the Carter-Winston School. So, Ms. Poe, I'll recognize you.
Good evening, Winston-Salem council members, Mayor Allen Joins, and those present tonight. We've put some gifts on your desk, and we hope you enjoy them. They're just a little token of appreciation for allowing us to stand up here and, and present you all with the resolution. I am Ms. Camille Poe, the school counselor at C. Douglas Carter High School, and it is truly an honor and a privilege to hold this position. I would like to express my gratitude to Councilwoman Burke for providing this incredible opportunity for Carter High School. And I also would like to acknowledge the invaluable support of Ms. Jamie Weldick throughout this journey. Today, we have the pleasure of witnessing the exceptional talents of our young scholars from Carter High School as they read the resolution recognizing the month of March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Our students at Carter are remarkable advocates for this community, and I couldn't be prouder. When parents come to our school, when they tour our school, I always emphasize that Carter is a place where their child can truly thrive and be the majority in their educational journey. We offer a wide range of opportunities from becoming homecoming king and queen to participating in sports activities, clubs, and engaging in educational yet enjoyable field trips. Carter High School is truly a special place, and I invite you to visit and experience it for yourselves. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity, and now I would like to introduce Kamari Walters, Austin Gavin, Lanise Keys, Brody Douglas, Mackenzie Coate, Melissa Salzar, and the dedicated Carter staff, Ms. Althea Holmes, Alithia Holmes, excuse me, Mr. David Cruz, Ms. Rashonda Wolf, and Wildcats. The stage is yours.
I'm, I'm ready. Whereas public law, 99-483, enacted by Congress in 1987, designated the month of March as National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and whereas in February of 2024, Roy Cooper, the governor of North Carolina, proclaimed March as, as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the state of North Carolina. And whereas it is the collective responsibility of all citizens to recognize and acknowledge that it's not disability but unjust social, social barriers and attitudes that can keep individuals from utilizing their full potential and...
Whereas the city of Winston-Salem emphasizes the importance of the inclusion of individuals with developmental disabilities in all intents of community life, and is committed to acknowledge the ongoing work needed to overcome existing barriers to create a community where everyone has the opportunity to succeed and...
Whereas the city of Winston-Salem commands the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the North Carolina Council on Developmental Disabilities, Winston-Salem, Forsyth County School District, and other businesses, organizations, and, and the, individuals throughout the state and the city working to improve the lives of people.
Good job, bro.
Now, day four, being resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem do help organize the month of March as the mental disabilities awareness month in the city of Winston-Salem, and call upon the people of Winston-Salem to join their, their citizens across the state of North Carolina and the United States in foundation of the special advocate, the day of this 25 days of March. Good call. Thank, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I hope you're okay, Mayor. Can you please take a picture with me, please?
Council, is there a motion, council, to approve this resolution?
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
I love excitement.
Well, I've had Miss Trimmer.
Young people, we've, young people, we've had a lot of people read resolutions for us over the years, but I think this is one of the best jobs that I've ever seen of the resolution being read and the energy behind it. So we're very pleased to present this resolution that has been, oh, just a second, I'll give it to you. The council has unanimously approved this resolution, awarding this, and so we're gonna take a quick picture.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, that was special, certainly. Brought a lot of energy into the council room tonight, for sure.
Love it.
So tonight's agenda, the city council is comprised of the general agenda only, as well as a public comment period and a closed session. The council will consider the general agenda, which is comprised of an item related to the April meeting schedule, a resolution regarding the City Vision Annual Conference, as well as a public hearing on two zoning petitions. When the public hearing is called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the rezoning item, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation, as well as three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. The meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, as well as on the city's YouTube page. And it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 AM and again tomorrow evening, excuse me, again Wednesday evening at 9:00 PM. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the watch meetings online option. May we have item number one, please?
Item G1, consideration of city council's 2024 revised April meeting schedule.
Mr. Pat, you want to comment on this?
Just, just quickly, this is just adding the Forsyth County Legislative Delegation meeting on April 12th at 10:00 AM at Union Station to your calendar.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item G2?
Item G2, resolution regarding the North Carolina League of Municipalities 2024 City Vision Annual Conference.
Thank you. We are appointing Mayor Pro Tim Adams as our delegate, voting delegate, and Councilmember Clark as the alternate to that. Would entertain a motion on this one?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Cipio, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. In discussion. All those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G3?
Item G3, public hearing and consideration of zoning petition of ONSC WS LLC from HBS to HBS. Property is located on the west side of University Parkway between Car Fair Drive and Harmony Street, containing approximately 1.18 acres, located in the northeast ward. Planning Board unanimously recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the proponents are here, if there are any questions. Anyone in the audience opposed to this rezoning? All right, you are opposed to this rezoning?
Yeah, I'm asking.
In just a moment, sir. All right, so we will hold a public hearing on this for the, sir, you're out of order. So the, for the proponents, Mr. Luke Dickey. Sir, you're out of order. Well, we'll find out in a moment. Mr. Dickey? Mr. Dickey, if you will, give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Luke Dickey. With Stimo Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, and members of the council, to get before you this evening for this case. What this is, is basically a request to go from highway business special use to highway business special use. This is just to add the use of motor vehicle repair and maintenance facility. That was not previously approved on this site. So Firestone Car Care is interested, so we have brought them forward with this to revise the site plan for them to move forward with that. So that's just a revision to the site plan and the new use that's being requested. We did have a neighborhood meeting with this, and we did have some, people from basically sunburst circle did attend that. There was concerns about stormwater, traffic, just with the improvements that were being done on University Parkway that NC DOT was being proposed with the median, and they just had concerns about getting the traffic movement. But that had already been approved previously to this, and there's no changes to the overall site plan or circulation in that sense. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions, Mr. Dickey? Or anyone else for the proponents, Mr. Dickey? Okay, we'll now hear from the opposition. If you would state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
God is my judge. Shalom. Oak by the stream. O C L. But anyways, I want to talk to the important people. Someday, wear a polo shirt. So I love you. I love you all. Can you hear me? I'm not turning my back on you. And you know that, you know that. And I can't even remember what the results were. I don't want to say I'm running for auto-filly candidate, but that's what I'm doing. You know why? Shalom. Can't we all say shalom? Well, positive shalom, not just absence of war. So I would not, let's pretend this is like a legal, you're, you haven't called me. Here, right? How's it going? You don't call me. None of you call me. We'll talk about the good things. Here's your thing, specifically to this, we don't need any more car washes. I can show you one that don't do none. Maintenance repair. We need, you know, electric bikes and those kind of things. We do need a drugstore, we need a marker, farmer's market, we know that. But banking, okay? It's like car washing motor, you know, you know what I'm saying? Church is great. Dropping places is awesome. So I see 90, 75, 72, 83 percent of what you're doing is, and you got the funding for it, right? That's the blessing. The highway department's going to fund it for it. But we don't maintain our roads. The highway departments are the funding for it, but we don't maintain our roads. And I want to sit down and say this, I'm gonna leave. I want to sit down with you all. Mr. Larson, you know, I said thank you all. I want to learn from your knowledge. But we know the history, the Moravians, you know, and the Black Navy, and the highway, when the highway divided the thing. You know. 52. U.S. It's not U.S., it's us. Okay, so don't get me started. But I need to sit down with you, and Mayor, I don't even know you, I've never seen you in a t-shirt. Are you human?
Sir, you want to keep your comments regarding this particular zoning case?
Hey, drugstores, cool. Furniture store, I don't know what that means. Well, how about all the vacant buildings we have? Okay? So in my last two seconds, because open mic, it's three minutes, it's a hard ass thing to do, or karaoke. Okay? I love you, man, I love the hair. One last thing. I'm not coming here again, I need you to come to me. Okay? Not like a showdown. Come down to, uh, you know, the hot dog place. Okay? South Side, Spagron, what's it, what's it called? You know, the one that's been there, could use a little bit of a touch up with some paint. It's a historic place. Well, we got gas station down there, it's historic. We don't need another gas station. We don't have the electrical infrastructure. I'm an electrician. Get shit done. You know, I love you, I love what you've done. And the funding aspects, I can't raise $5 for stamps, but I do. So anyways, we need to have a sit down. Okay? Can you blink three times? Are you being held hostage? Sir? You don't get a chance to talk, is that rules rights? Just say yes or no.
Have you finished your comments?
Yes.
All right, thank you, if you'd have a seat. Now, for the proponents, you would have three minutes for rebuttal, if you'd like it.
Thumbs up, Greek style, end of story, thumbs up or thumbs down. Will you meet with me? You will.
I'll make the rules. Mr. Dickey, would you like to add anything for, on rebuttal? All right. And for the opposition, you could add anything on rebuttal as well. Do you have anything to add, sir?
Yes, sir. Can we have a meet? Not what you, you're not a judge.
We're, we're talking about this zoning case just now. Are you finished with your comments on it?
Yeah, okay. The childcare is great, religious is great, we have too many churches. We don't have places to talk, you know? We don't have room for people to live. You see the building downtown? I tell you, that can't look up. I want to sit down and talk about the money that's been spent on infrastructure that don't help her, and you know what I'm saying, baby. Cleveland Avenue's great.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, we have, we've heard from the opposition, as well as the proponents. Uh, Mr. Murphy, would you like to give the report of the planning board?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Uh, I'm going to, uh, give you just a brief overview of the, uh, of the rezoning request. This is a request to go from HBS to HBS. Essentially, there was an action that was approved by city council a couple of years ago. They are, uh, bringing part of that plan back through for an, for an amendment, uh, to change the site plan to add a auto repair place, uh, uh, motor vehicle repair and maintenance, and changing the site plan, and that's what's before you here tonight, is to add that use and modify the site plan. And the planning board recommended unanimous approval of that, and with that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Questions to Mr. Murphy? All right, uh, this is in, uh, Councilmember Burke's ward. I would recognize her for a motion, if she's ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and two, W dash 3607.
Second. Motion by, uh, Councilmember Burke, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item G4?
Item G4, public hearing and consideration of zoning petition of Kelvin Gwynn from RS9 to RSQL. Look, property is located at the northeast intersection of South Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Allen Street, containing approximately 0.28 acres, located in the southeast ward. Planning Board unanimously recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this proposed rezoning? The proponents are here, but, uh, I will close the public hearing and, uh, see, this is, uh, Mr. Taylor's ward, do you wish to move forward, or?
Yeah, if I may.
Yes, please.
Mayor members of the council, I move for approval of item G4, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and W dash 3608.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Taylor, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Do you want to?
Just a quick comment. Mr. Gwynn, I want to thank you for bringing this project forward. I think it's a good project. Uh, thank you for bringing your business to our community, and we're looking forward to supporting it. Appreciate what you're doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item, please. Okay, public comment period. This is a time once per month when the city council invites citizens to speak on items that are germane to city government. Uh, we'd limit our comments to three minutes each, and would ask that you give your name and address for the record, and we'd limit the comment period to a total of 30 minutes. Well, so there's a number of people who signed up tonight, so I would urge you to keep your comments as brief as possible, uh, and we'll begin, uh, with, uh, John Jennings, I believe it is.
Good evening, Winston, and good evening, council.
Good evening.
I would have liked to have something prepared, but I'll try to keep it.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Mr. Joins. It's, uh, John Jennings. Address is 1128 Madison Avenue, Winston-Salem.
Thank you.
I've come to y'all tonight because, the way I see it, my speech has become limited, and that's one step away from becoming compelled. That is a huge, huge, huge problem here in the South. We have a major history. We have a major history down here, and there are brothers and sisters dying on the other side of the Atlantic. I know that, as an individual working class man, I've got no power over it, and I know that everybody in this room, including y'all, as individuals, has no power over it. We got to come together. We've got to come together. I've gone and talked to the people of this city, and they are not happy with what's going on overseas, and they're not happy to hear that when they're going to have a problem in this city, that they're only going to have 30 minutes to talk about it. I don't know who else has got to speak after me, but that's really all I need to say. I hope you have a good night, and I hope that next city council meeting, maybe you'll have reconsidered this.
Thank you. Rafi Kermani, Kermani? Excuse me if I mispronounced your name.
Good evening. My name is Rafia Kermani. My address is 2449 Moss Grove Crossing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I am a proud educator of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools for the past 21 years, a voting member of our community, and I have worked alongside Peggy Van Joens at Con Oak Elementary for nine years. I am here tonight to implore you to place importance on the resolution for an immediate ceasefire submitted by Toni Nadee to put on, to put this on your agenda, and then to vote and pass this resolution in Winston-Salem. My requests, my reasons for this request are as follows. At this moment, it does not matter if you agree with our call that a genocide is happening. At this moment, 1.5 million displaced Palestinian civilians are seeking refuge in Rafa, as demanded by Israeli forces, and are now being bombed, shot, tortured, or starved. Whether or not this is being done to retrieve hostages, killing innocent lives is not how this retrieval should be conducted. When a gunman infiltrates one of our schools, our response is not to rain bullets and drop bombs, disregarding the lives of students, teachers, and staff in order to reach the shooter. And believe me, I've done many shooter drills. My next reason to beg you to pass this resolution is because hostages cannot and will not be released without a ceasefire or guaranteed safe passage in place. By you supporting this, you would show me, and millions more around the world, that you truly value all human life. My final reason is that each of you must dig deeper and think more critically about the events of October 7th and why they occurred. No parent should have to bury their child. I don't believe we were equipped with what it takes to handle it, honestly. In Gaza, it has happened 14,000 times in 168 days. 14,000 children dead, 25,000 children orphaned, and parents who are traumatized beyond belief. We would never accept this reality in the U.S. Why is this council not placing this resolution on your agenda to be considered? And if you'd make eye contact, that would be lovely. The only difference between Palestinian city council members, or the equivalent, and their loved ones, and your loved ones, is geography. This could all be happening to you. I implore you to get your mind right. Thank you.
Elif Ergener? Elif Ergener, if I'm pronouncing that correct. Elif?
Is it Ela?
Okay. Uh, Calvin Patterson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, and city council members. My name is Calvin Patterson. I reside at 2273 Woodsong Lane here in Winston-Salem, 27106. Uh, first, I want to congratulate, uh, those of you who were challenged in the primaries and won. So, um, I know it was a, a battle. Um, it's not over until election time, but congratulations on your victory. More specifically, I'm here as a representative of the Winston-Salem Black Chamber of Commerce. We're a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization, organized back in 2002. Um, I'm the current president. My predecessor, Brandon Pender, served for many years, and whose shoulders I stand on. I'm here mentioning that role because we are fortunate and grateful to be a part of the City of Winston-Salem Strategic Plan 2020 through 2025, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, specifically, we're in the plan as part of the, uh, so-called ecosystem, along with Greater Winston-Salem Inc., um, Forsyth Tech, as well as some other nonprofits, with a focus on workforce development. A large part of what the Winston-Salem Black Chamber of Commerce is about, for its 100-plus members at this point, is in fact, training with a piece involving workforce development. We have a signature program called the Road to Business Resilience Training. Uh, Councilmember Cipio, who is gracious enough back, uh, a couple of years ago, to be a guest speaker at one of our graduating ceremonies, where we basically focus on core competencies to help budding entrepreneurs and existing entrepreneurs thrive and survive in this challenging economy, um, that we are in post-COVID, or we hope, post-COVID. We were fortunate enough, through the, uh, amount of support that we provided to startup organizations, to make a list in the Triad Business Journal. I think we were number 11 out of 25 as one of the NO advocacy organizations, basically through the training, providing funding to startup organizations. Uh, we also, uh, had a television program called Business in You Today that aired April through December of 2023, where we provided a platform for our members and members of the community on the CW channel on Saturday afternoons, to talk about their journey and their path to being a entrepreneur. We look forward to your continued support, um, and thank you for the time to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Il Blakely, I think.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lynetta Blakely, and thank you guys for, um, the opportunity to speak. I second all that was aforementioned by our president, which is Calvin Patterson of the Winston-Salem Black Chamber of Commerce. Um, we want to invite each of you all to a front row seat of the good work that we're doing in the community. Our most recent initiative is, um, the Youth Empowerment Program, um, where we, um, assist inner-city youth to realize their dreams. Um, we're just doing great work in the community, and we're part of the ecosystem. We were excited to learn that we're a part of the, um, strategic plan, and so we can see how, um, we can work together to get some deployed dollars into that sector. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Denise?
Thank you. Anthony Endegue, 1713 Chapel Street. Since the last public commentary period where we submitted the sample resolution that I submitted again just now, more than one in every hundred children in Gaza have been killed, far more. More than 31,000 Gazan civilians have been slaughtered. Many children have already died of maltrition, and hundreds of thousands of Gazans face starvation as the blockade of lifesaving aid has continued in attempts to make the situation in Gaza completely unlivable. The majority of the 2 million displaced Gazans, approximately 1.5 million people, have been violently forced into a small region, as Ms. Kermani just mentioned, in the southernmost part of Gaza. To illustrate the situation, 1.5 million people, many of whom have run out of food and water, have been pushed into the city of Rafa, which is an area of less than 50 square miles. Let's compare that with the city of Winston-Salem, a city of only 250,000 people, which is less than one-fifth of that number. However, Winston-Salem is roughly 135 square miles, not 50. Netanyahu has now vociferously stated that Israel will stay the course in its destruction until victory, regardless of negotiations. What does "until victory" mean in this context? Victory in this context can only mean a ground invasion of Rafa. It means the worst kind of genocide. It means attempting to violently push over a million people into the north Sinai region of Egypt. It means ethnic cleansing, without tax, tax dollars, mind you. It means one of the most heinous crimes against humanity of this century. Elected members of the city council, we simply ask you to stand on the right side of history, and to do your part as leaders in our community, our community, in joining the immense global pressure for an immediate and permanent ceasefire and an end to all military aid to the Israeli occupation and genocide. You pass resolutions all the time. Join the cities of Durham, North Carolina, Chicago, San Francisco, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and over a hundred others. Don't wait on anyone else to do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Matthew Myers?
My name is Matthew Myers. I live at 284 from Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Also, I want to thank you for, uh, the meeting you held a week ago at, uh, Union Station about housing issues in Winston-Salem. It's really gratifying to see you all putting the attention and the energy that that issue deserves in our city, and, um, especially thank you to Ms. Toni and her crew, um, great folks giving really interesting and informative presentations. Um, I also felt that I learned a lot listening to the presentation from Self Help, I think it was Mr. Frolic. You've got a lot of work to do, and, uh, you probably won't be surprised to hear me say that there's a part of the conversation that I didn't really hear that day, that really needs to be centered in this conversation, and that is making affordable housing affordable for the long term by incorporating sustainability aspects into it. That means energy efficiency, that means electrification of appliances, it means pre-wiring for things like solar panels and electric vehicle chargers, because those are the things that, whether you want to believe it or not, are going to be necessary in the not-too-distant future. Uh, for a really long time in our country, and really the world, we've thought of sustainability as kind of a thing over there that you tack on, if you can, to an issue. But I think you all know that's not really the right way to approach it. Um, we're basically running out of time in this world, and sustainability of our environment has to be placed front and center of just about everything that we do. Now, luckily, uh, as you are probably aware, we have, um, a lot more funding available to make that happen now. But I think we all still, um, have a little bit of that mindset. But I think we all still have a little bit of that mindset of putting it over here and tacking it on if we can. It's something that we all need to work on, I believe. It has to be part of the, a central part of our discussion. Luckily, we can do it now. We need to make sustainability central for our environment and our climate. There are good social justice reasons to do it. There are good environmental justice reasons to do it, and most of all, there are really good economic reasons to do it now. It's the way to make things affordable for today and for decades to come. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Tobia, Tobia Alatov. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Zobia Akhtar, and I reside at 734 Taylor Ridge Road. When I was younger, I never understood why I had to learn about World War I and World War II in school. But a teacher told me once that it was so that history wouldn't repeat itself, so that we wouldn't repeat the mistakes of the past. So then how have we ended up here? Each individual has a responsibility to speak up against wrongs. Councilmembers, you also have a responsibility to speak up against wrongs, but also more than that, there's a responsibility to show your constituents that you care about them. There is a responsibility to show that you care about what they care about. We are asking for an end to genocide. We are asking for an end to suffering, and we are asking that you show that if this were to happen here, that you would stand up, that you would care. And so we urge you to care, to take a stand for us to believe that you care. All of us wonder, what would our role be in the midst of suffering, in the midst of injustice? A ceasefire would merely be the very beginning. What is happening in Gaza right now is an inevitable outcome of decades of occupation. Councilmembers, if we as a city are not going to ask for an end to suffering, pain, trauma, the systematic murder of babies, then when we look back at our role in this historical atrocity, do we want to feel disappointment, or do we want to say that we did what we could and that we tried?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Navina Attah. Navina.
Hi, my name is Navina Attah. I live on 4515 Vincent Street, and as my fellow members have mentioned, and I would like to reiterate and clarify, we are demanding for a permanent ceasefire because just an immediate ceasefire will not help the people in Gaza. They need humanitarian aid. They need food. They need water. They need housing, and right now they have none of that. And I'm hoping tonight and for nights to come, when we continue to show up and let you know about the situation, I want you to feel empowered and see how we can all come together to agree on something. What we need is inclusivity, and there's nothing wrong with wanting to make sure others have the same rights as us, have the same privileges as us. And it just really upsets me because it's issues going on here that also need to be fixed and worked on, as you've heard of from tonight. But how can we even work to fix that if we can't even come together to help fix issues for everyone else? Because in conclusion of all of that, it helps all of us, even if it is not pertaining specifically to me or specifically to you. Helping these people in Gaza will also help push people to support people in Congo, people in Sudan, people in Afghanistan, and then people here. There are issues that are happening here, such as homelessness, unemployment, not being able to financially provide for yourself, that people are also experiencing all over the world. So how do we then come together to fix those issues? What we do is have this where you guys listen and we all speak, but then there needs to be action taken. What action is being taken to help people in Gaza? What action is being taken to help the people in Congo? What actions are being taken to help people here, to help people in general? We have to start asking ourselves that and then continuing to work forward to see those solutions and those conclusions, because we can come here all the time and have these meetings and say the same things. Most of the time, we're saying different things because as we keep talking, more people are dying, more people are starving, more people are going missing. But if we then start to talk about solutions and conclusions, we can work on ending those things and also resolving other issues that align with that as well. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Deborah Davensk. Deborah Dimp. Deborah Dimpsky. Perhaps. Okay. Shannon Huitt.
Hi, good evening. I reside at 2346 Allman Street. I want to thank you, members of City Council, Mayor Johns, for letting me speak. I wanted to state my support for a resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and for the end of military aid provided by the U.S. to Israel and for the immediate delivery of much-needed food and aid to the Palestinians. I'm not going to rehash all of the numbers and the statistics that we've heard. I know you guys see it reported in the news. It doesn't really mean much if you don't see it in a humanitarian context. I do see these images coming across on my social media feed every day of children, men, women, just being obliterated and now being starved as a matter of policy by the State of Israel. The Israeli leaders have been on the record publicly stating that their intention is to either kill the remaining Palestinians, 1.5 million of them, who are now cordoned off into Rafa, and if they don't kill them, they will starve them, or they will displace them, every single one of them. Right now, those numbers are slightly above 30,000. What happens when they are in the hundreds of thousands? What happens when it's 1.5 million? What can you say that you have done as a U.S. citizen watching this happen? As elected representatives, what will you be able to say that you've done? I was a student, a serious student of history here in Salem College at one point in my life, and the one thing that I remember thinking when I studied the horrors of the Holocaust is, what would I do? Would I be like those Germans who just sat by and watched it happen, who looked the other way, who did nothing? Well, I will not be one of those Germans. I will not be one of those Americans. And make no mistake, the ability of Israel to carry out this genocide is contingent upon our continued military, intelligence, and political support of their project. That makes every single one of us in this room complicit unless we stand up and say "not" in our name. Thank you.
David Valada.
When I started this, good afternoon. David Valada, 4634 Shalone Drive. Mayor, City Councilmen, Councilwomen. Thank you for all that you do for our community, but I come today to speak and to ask of more involvement, more of your duties, more involvement hands-on than what you already do. You guys do a lot. You guys provide for our city, mandate what we got going on. But one of the things that I'm asking for today is for you guys to, specifically the City Councilmen from the south side of Winston-Salem, to reach out to us. And when I say us, I mean the community. We had about 35, 40 people who wanted to come out today and be here. I felt that that would be too much to overload you guys with, but we have over 1,000 people signing petitions to help us and assist our community, to give back our parks to our youth, to our kids, where there should be joy, where there should be peace. Where this young girl right here, Anity Morales Benya Losa, passed away a year ago due to violence, gun violence, that has become a pandemic in our streets. Guys heard me speak about this. We've been to forums. We've spoken about the gun violence in our community. There's no way, there's no reason why a park should lead to death. When you think about parks, you think about kids, you think about family, you think about fun, joy. This young girl loved life. She enjoyed going to the park. She was at a wrong place at a wrong time. We're asking if the city would meet with us, the councilmen specifically from the south side would meet with us, Park and Recreation meet with us. We want to see if Western Park can either be renamed or adopted to Anity Park. We're also asking that April 21st become Anity Day, a day where the kids can be at a park, enjoy fun, and just having moments that can be kids, you know? What more would you want to take your kids, to your grandchildren, to a park and have fun and joy instead of having to run for your life, having to see videos of shootouts and stuff and know that it was your loved one that ended up dead? A 12-year-old girl at a park, that hurts. There's so much crime, there's so much stuff going on in our city that we've spoken, you guys know. Last year, we hit the ultimate high. We've done peace treaties, we've done a lot of different things, we've been speaking, we're having council meetings, and I tell you, like I told other people, what we're doing is not working. I'm not blaming nobody, even myself. Whatever I'm doing is not working because look where we at. Look at the numbers. We ask that you please meet with us, sit with us, ask how you guys can help us and assist us.
Thank you, David.
Otherwise, we'll be forced to bring all the people that wanted to be here. We'll be able to force to bring the people and let you speak to them, let them hear
Thank you, David.
...of mothers who have lost their children.
All right.
And when they come, they're going to hear you guys say the same thing.
Your time's up, David. Thank you. Jessica Morales.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Morales, and I reside at 38 Barnes Road. I'm here to continue speaking on the fact of renaming the park in honor of Anity Morales and also adopting or continuing with April 21st to create it a field day. We wanted to be said as a reminder for the day of the event that had happened that day. Unfortunately, a 12-year-old had lost her life due to gun violence from a fight that had, could have been prevented that day. And if you guys get a chance to sit with us, I would like to speak over about what plans we have for that day. We'd like to make like a field day, like school activities and fun for the kids and give back to the community in certain sort of way. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Allen.
Joanne Allen, P.O. Box 28427102. Good evening. First, let me start out by saying we have to allow thieves to put his or her hands in the cricket jar before he or she is caught. Please see my YouTube video, "Joanne Allen Exposes a Rigged System" by Audit USA. In 2016, Politico magazine did an extensive article on Winston-Salem, "How Tech Helped Winston-Salem Quit Tobacco." In this article, Mayor Johns states that we, his crew, and nonprofits would never ask the local government for money and that we would be totally transparent in everything we did so there would be no conflicts. Apparently, that was a big, flat lie. We have given millions and millions of our tax dollars to its associates and its seven nonprofits. No surprise, silence from the news media. When individuals have dirt or something on one another, including some of the ministers and judges, even down to individuals being pulled over by local and state law enforcement, remember, there's always a people and paper trail, including videos and subpoenas. Mr. Pate, welcome back to Winston-Salem. You were here in 1987 through 1990, working in the Budget Department, and I'm sure you remember Mr. Curtis Dixon. Please take the time out to read Mr. Dixon's book, "The $5 Million Conspiracy." I'm sure you haven't forgotten certain incidents in Mr. Dixon's book as to what was going on at City Hall during your brief three years. What's done in the dark will soon come to light, whether the news media reported it or not, someone will. This is my city. This is my home. Most of you all are visitors who made Winston-Salem home. Let me repeat that again. Most of you are visitors who have made Winston-Salem home. There is a difference, so let the games begin. For a handful of city employees who abuse their positions and titles of authority, let me remind you, your role is to serve the public. We are watching you, and you don't get to sweep it under the carpet anymore. And let me just say this very quickly. Enough is enough. We have sat back and we have watched you all make decisions for us. We've got more people homeless, we've got more people with no jobs, we've got more people that's getting evicted every day, and you all sit back and you spend our money. You spend our money the way you want to spend it, for your friends and your associates and business associates and everything. You all have the first dibs on what's coming to town 15, 20 years ahead of everyone else. So let me just say this. We're not going anywhere. We're not through. Thank you.
Thank you. Hanin Nasaf. Hanin Nasaf. This is the last speaker for tonight. Go ahead.
My name is Hanin, and I live in 180 Boundale Street, Winston-Salem. You're sitting here safely with a roof over your head while there are families who don't even have a home. They freeze to death. They sit outside in the freezing weather, in the rain, in the cold. You have food, you've got water, while there are families, there are humans who haven't eaten any proper meal for over six months. You smile, you laugh, you live happily, while there are people who experience loved one's death every single day. They see dead bodies every day. They find their homes bombed. They find their memories crushed. They find their future gone. People lose their children. Kids are left alone as orphans. Imagine your child shivering from fear. Imagine your child so thin can't find any meat on their body due to starvation. Imagine putting your loved one into the soil, knowing you'll never see them again, or leaving your child alone in this war, terrified, not knowing what to do. Just imagine, more than 30,000 Palestinians have died. Why? Why did this amount of people have to die and still no one has the heart to help? It's a genocide. It's crystal clear. I learned that we should always do what we can where we are with what we have. And you, sitting in these seats today, you have and you sure can do a lot to stop this genocide and bloodshed, this injustice and this war. Try to help who needs the most help. Think about the lives that are lost. Think about the genocide that's happening. Think about it. What if you were in their place? What if you lost your limbs, going through starvation, lost your beloved children? Your home has got bombed, and your memories have been crushed. Maybe if you think about it this way, maybe, just maybe, you'll find it in your hearts to help those in desperate need. From the river to the sea, Palestine will soon be free. Ceasefire now.
Thank you. We'll end the closed, we'll end the public comment period. Farah, I recognize you for a motion.
I hope that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina Ginger Statute 143-31811A4 to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of an industry or business within the city.
Motion second. All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Is there a motion to end the closed session?
So move.
I read the order. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor, end the closed session. Need to get, all those in favor of ending closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're out, we're back in open session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protim and seconded by Councilwoman Robert to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We are adjourned.